Um. Sure.
All right, carry on then.
Go ahead, Pat.
As you were, as you were. I was proud of him.
That was just gonna be awkward. Hi, man.
Don't be using the wrong.
Well, listen, just sit back and listen.
Wait for you, Michael, not because we were impatient, because you're an important part of this community. And this council. Welcome. Okay, let's go and get started. I know we got a few things on the docket for our pre-meeting. Let's go ahead and start with our proposed budget summary. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilors. It's good to be here tonight. Like we do every year at this time, according to the guiding statutes here, it's our obligation to deliver to you a very basic, boiled-down version of the budget summary. So in your packets, you will see the layout, if you will, for the $183.6 million if we're anticipating spending over the next year. This stage of budget delivery does not include any analysis or any themes that we need to discuss or anything at all. This is just the very first step that we need to take in order to deliver the budget to you, which will culminate, of course, in the work sessions coming up toward the end of this month, which I'm sure you all have on your calendars anyway. So so that really is all we need to do to meet that statutory obligation.
Questions about the summary?
Thank you, Mayor. So on tonight's agenda, as far as part of that in the debate sessions, as far as are there some things that we need to make?
Just budget amendment.
In process or no?
Not as far as the delivery of the budget is concerned.
Budget amendment. For this year's budget.
Right, for the current budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next up, Blue Peak Fiber Optic.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. We are very fortunate to have representatives of the Blue Peak team here tonight. Some of you have asked that there be some conversation had with regard to recent outages that have occurred throughout the community. And Blue Peak, to their credit, has acknowledged a role in that and has suggested that they be available to answer any questions or discuss you know, process and things that they do to try to avoid these very kinds of things. So I, for one, appreciate their willingness to come and visit with us and appreciate the opportunity to engage with them as far as these kinds of issues are concerned. I know that many of you have, over the last several months, gotten questions too about citizen engagement with respect to contract workers that they oversee as well. And if you care to ask for information broadly about that too, I'm sure they could walk you through some of that as well. So without further ado, if I could turn some time over to our friend from Blue Peak.
Sure, thank you. Come on up. Get right up here. Thank you.
Well, I'm just gonna chat with you all tonight. My name's Lucas Peterson. I work in government affairs for Blue Peak Fiber Internet. Also joining me here is Randy Butler, our Director of Government Affairs, and Mike Corbett, who is our Construction Manager for the City of Casper. And just wanted to kind of give you an overview, an update on a recent utility strike and subsequent outage, service outage that happened because of that. Wanted to start off though by saying, you know, at Blue Peak, we try to do everything we can to prevent issues with construction. And we know it can be a messy process sometimes. And so want to make sure that, you know, when we're constructing through people's yards, that citizens are aware of construction. We're doing our best to make sure that clean up, restore their properties to how they were beforehand. Mike and his team do a really good job of keeping on that, doing the preventative measures, and also are very responsive when issues do occur. Strike that happened, I'll just kind of give you some information on that, occurred on the 22nd of April in the evening. We had a subcontractor crew that was working in the area of Durbin Avenue in Collins Drive. They were doing permitted and authorized work with the city, the city's approval. Prior to beginning that work, they followed proper procedures. Of course, when something happens, investigate, make sure, see how it occurred, why it occurred, and if there's anything that we weren't doing properly. But they did follow the required procedures, including calling in an 811 request for locates to the utility companies. And then we did an appropriate amount of time for the utility companies come out and locate their lines in that area. Despite that request going in, there wasn't unmarked underground fiber line from another provider in that area. Because it was unmarked, our crews were not aware that it was there. And so it was hit during that construction process. Once the hit occurred, our contractors immediately stopped work, contacted that provider, let them know of the strike, stayed on-site until they got there, and then also assisted as they could to help bring service back on going through that. So that's kind of an overview of what happened and how it happened, our response, and be happy to answer any questions about that or anything else that you have.
Any questions from council?
Yep.
So, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here and all of that. So specifying fine.
Yeah, it was spectrum charter, yes, fine, yes.
And so why wouldn't that have been in process? Can you explain to me? You know, and why it would not have been?
Sure. You know, those locates are responsibility of the providers when they have facilities in the area. That ticket goes out, notifies all of them to come and locate whatever facilities they may have. I'm not sure on their end of things, why it got missed. I do know, you know, we confirmed that we did submit the ticket. It went out to the correct utilities, and they were notified of the work in the area. So I'm not sure why it was missed and not marked. That's probably more something Charter, Spectrum could answer. But yeah, we don't know internally for them why it didn't get marked or how it got missed that way. But we do know that the question was made and sent out to the property companies.
Okay, so I think my greater concern is about Blue Peak, but the comments that came back to me, they're, you know, as far as folks out in Paradise Valley and those folks out that way, and they have Horizon. They still had two bars down in North Casper, but for some reason, Paradise Valley, evidently, they lost that. They also lost the Spectrum service. That went down. And so questions came up about 911. And because they did try utilizing their SLS app in that field. And nobody wants to just call 911 to try it. But I never really got a clear answer if 911 still worked. I've been told it does somehow, but if SLS, that app, you know, doesn't work out in the backcountry, it seems to link to all of that, but maybe it uses doors. I wondered if you had any thoughts on that?
Um, you know, I'm not sure on Horizon's infrastructure and how their network works and if, you know, what happens if if service goes down, what kind of redundancy or anything that they have. I'm sure they have some, but I'm not sure exactly. Probably be best to have that information, but.
Mayor. Yeah, like Counselor Sweeney said, I think a lot of people didn't realize their spectrum fiber fed the Verizon tower. It's a humbling experience for myself, silver lining. I appreciate, you know, knowing that I had a single point of failure in regards to my ability to connect with anyone else at my house. So good to know now. And I do appreciate you being here because we don't get to see from, you know, we don't get to hear received provider reps very often. So I appreciate you coming in and wanting to entertain some questions. My question is actually, over the weekend, I had a constituent in the area of 21st and Kaufman reach out to me and he was, I don't know if it's, he didn't seem sure about who the provider was. So I'm not sure if it was you or Visionary or maybe one of the other folks, but he was upset with kind of the state that things were left after people had worked in the easement. So I was curious, as far as Blue Peak, I know you can't speak for the other folks, but as far as Blue Peak is concerned, what is your guys' process when a resident, I guess from the very beginning, how does a resident get ahold of you to let you know that a subcontractor, you know, worked within their easement, maybe had a sprinkler or tore up some landscaping and they feel like it was not put back to their standard? What does that process look like? How do they get ahold of you? And what measures do you guys have in place from a kind of quality control perspective to make sure that the work that was done kind of means the same?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. I'll give you kind of a brief overview of our communication process before construction starts in the area. About 30 days before construction starts, we send out a postcard to residents notifying them. It says big letters on a white background, notice, construction coming soon. On the back, it'll have our phone number, brief information of construction, underground construction of Blue Peak Fibers. It's coming into our neighborhood soon. Here's a link to our website for information on construction, phone number if you have questions or concerns. And usually about 15 days out, another postcard will be sent, again, notifying of construction. Getting some information has website and phone number on there. Then a third piece of mail is sent out. It's an actual letter with frequently asked questions on it about construction and with contact information. And then I believe it's about three days before construction starts, our crews will go and put tags on people's door handles saying, you know, constructions a few days away. Phone numbers, cause if you have issues or have questions, concerns. And then once construction starts, we put up yard signs in the area. It says, "Blue Peak Fiber Construction" in your area. Has a QR code on there and also phone number in big letters and big numbers. So that's kind of how we communicate on the front end. If there are issues, the resident can call that number. Our number's prominent on the website as well. They can website, call. It goes to our, a call center in South Dakota. That is Blue Peak employees that are talking to people, residents that are calling in. It's not contracted out or anything. It is our employees that are answering questions. Once a call happens and a complaint happens and I think, you know, to construction my yard and didn't put it back the way it should have been, the call center would then create a ticket in our internal system. That ticket will then go to Mike. He'll get a notification of that ticket, call the resident, see, you know, if it was us in the area. Sometimes we get calls and it wasn't us constructing, but maybe somebody else. But if it was us, he calls them, sees what the issue is, goes out either himself or whatever field engineers, surveys the property, sees what the issue, what needs to be done to fix it, turn it back to the state it's supposed to be in. And then we will then work with property owner. Either they want somebody to, they know somebody, they want them to come out and fix it, and we work with them on reimbursing them for that. Or we'll have one of our crews or we'll find a company to come and do that work and then pay for that. So that's kind of our process. We'll also get you know, referred complaints from city councilors of the city to Mike or myself as well. And then I'll contact Mike and follow up on that. We typically have our bi-weekly meetings, especially during construction season with the city, some city staff that we're close with to monitor those. So if the city hears complaints or the city is wondering, hey, where's the restoration at of this property? Is it being taken care of? What's the plan? Those are points of accountability that we say that you know, the update is holding us accountable. Make sure that we're making progress in those things.
I appreciate that. I will, again, I'm sure the process is a little different for a constituent, but hopefully no one mistakes. But I'll definitely pass that along because if I talk to a constituent, I wonder, I want people to work the process. But if I talk to a constituent that says, the call submitted the ticket, resolution wasn't up to my standard, I wonder, I would love to be able to help someone to follow up on it. So I don't know if potentially keep all this contact. Absolutely. I want people to work through the workflow you guys have set up. I work in a place that has ticketing systems. I understand the importance of documentation, but there are definitely times where I feel compelled to advocate on behalf of a constituent to make sure that the folks that we have here have your agreements. So I'd love to just have a contact phone with someone.
Yes.
I hope you catch that at some point.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I have some business cards, but also happy to send an email to the whole council, give you my contact information, brand and likes, so you can contact any of us directly on an issue and it kind of goes directly to the right person and we can address it from there. So absolutely.
If you just want us to email out to this.
Yes, great. CCR, City Manager on the period. Absolutely. I'll do that.
Michael.
Similar, my questions are similar to what us. Okay. So on the notification process, again, my experience with what some of my constituents raised, on the communication, it was not clear that it would be going through their property. And they kind of loosely interpreted as, okay, construction in the area. Oh, it'll be in the street or the alley or, but they didn't realize it's going to be on their property. And so that might be something that you might clarify in the communication. Something to clarify that this may indeed go into your yard or that would be helpful, I think, provide more clarity.
Yes, absolutely. And I will, I will share that with our marketing department. Appreciate that feedback. We receive feedback. You know, our materials evolve over time as we receive feedback from cities and people say, hey, this didn't make sense to me here. People didn't really understand what it was. So I think I'll definitely share that with them and make some adjustments so it's more clear. And then you're not receiving phone calls. People this is one, they're one's one enough. So, yes, thank you.
That's, that's been a pretty thing of the folks I've talked to, just not being clear on what exactly is their property. And just a second question, second part of that, if I could. So similar again to the other question about I would appreciate having your contact information as well, if I ever fully happen as a folks, some kind of question. Most of them have not resolved. But again, it would be helpful if the city could maybe help advocate for them, help them. A couple of these were elderly folks who and one of the concerns was around having to get, like, for example, one of the ways her sprinkler system had been torn up. It's actually in the whole part section of brass. And the sprinkling system had been out connected to her system. And so she was, she did exactly what you described, which was she got a ticket number and she had all that. That was, they wanted, again, to reimburse her and put that in. I think her concern was she's next to come and just laying out that money ahead of time and then having to wait for so if there's any way to just pick out the middle man and go and have them go direct. Have done perhaps, or whatever that process needs to look like.
Absolutely. Absolutely going to work with that and make it so it's not a burden on a resident or anything, you know. If it's a restoration issue that we need to take care of, we don't want it to be any more of a burden. So, yeah, I know we've done a direct payment to a contractor to fix things before and also, you know, have invoices submitted directly to us. We just pay versus resident getting reimbursed. So absolutely. Please let me know her information and we can reach out to her and make sure that that doesn't cause an issue or undue burden on my personal. Thank you.
We've got two more items on here. Do you want to help? Two more items. So go ahead and move forward. Really appreciate you guys coming out, chat with us and kind of walking us through it. Appreciate your continued efforts in our community, your investment in our communicating with us.
Well, thank you so much for being a good partner with us. And I know, you know, Mike speaks very highly of working with the city. So, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to be here. So we appreciate you guys. Thank you.
All right, Fort Casper State Park Assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have the opportunity to engage the state in a question regarding the feasibility of taking Fort Casper as a state park facility. And so my hope is that we can consider this and allow the mayor to sign a letter that would engage that department to make this feasibility and consideration happen. I think it's important to note that this is not one of those things that if they view it as being good to go and something we should do and so on, that the state nor the city have an obligation to do what it is that's recommended. And so for me, it's a question that is important to ask at this moment in our history because indeed, if the state were to take this on, which is a long shot, the city would stand to save significant dollars by not having to subsidize this operation any longer. So I think it's imperative that we ask a question and see what comes of it. Like I said, I think it's an absolute long shot. It'll be a very interesting assessment at the very least. And, you know, I couldn't recommend not considering something like this, given the time period that we're in.
Questions?
So, thank you, Mayor. We're not bound by any findings.
That's correct.
In this political climate, I would be very well, with all the cutting that's been reported in the media. And that would go for state parks too. So as long as got it out. Because I'm assuming after state parks would say, yeah, this would be great. And then they've got to go to the legislature for funding.
Mayor, Counselor, that's exactly right. If, if the employees of the department and those who are conducting this study think it's the best idea that they've ever seen, that does not mean that the legislature will buy onto it and actually authorize this to happen. So you're right. That is just one step of what I would consider probably a fairly long involved process. But I'd love to take that first step.
Counsel, okay with me signing the letter to just take that first step? Okay. Awesome. All right. Yeah, last item.
Yes, please. The Health Department sent us a funding request just a couple of weeks ago. And in my estimation, it was a very reasonable request. And indeed, I had the opportunity to visit with Ms. Kinder prior to that letter coming in. And so I wanted to let you know that we plan to incorporate the request into the development of the budget, which would bring the city's contribution to $600,000 even on an annual basis. And right now, we're at 575. So I would feel comfortable advocating for that on, on the behalf of the request. And unless there's any concerns to not do so, we plan to incorporate it into the budget as well.
Questions, concerns, thoughts?
So I believe Anna's here if anybody does have questions.
Sorry, Counsel. Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I have any questions for Anna. And I agree with the City Manager that going back to the 2015, 2016 funding levels is an appropriate request. I guess I'd still like to voice my continued concern though that as far as local governments are concerned, Health Department receives funding from the county of Casper and from Mills. It does not appear that other municipalities in our county are contributing. And then the one cent revenue, I can't recall if that's county one cent or city one cent, but I do recall having concerns in the past that, again, we've received requests at the city of Casper level, but I just continually feel like Casper shoulders a disproportionate burden. And so I guess I would just, I don't know what can be done to alleviate those concerns of mine, if anything, but just one of many examples, I feel like Casper's in that position.
We can look at having more dialogue around municipalities, partners, as something.
I think the county is at 700. I don't remember the exact number, but 700. I'm going to say 40 or 60,000. I think Mills, if I remember right, is 15,000. That's required when they became a Class A city. That's um required when they became a class A city. Barnon and Evansville don't need their. It's the trigger, but I I don't know for air.
I think. Talk to them at state statute, but it's.
Yeah, once a city becomes first class, city, they have to opt in to the jurisdiction of the uh Health Department. And so once Mills became that first class city, then that opened the Health Department to have those conversations. So the jurisdiction of the Health Department extends through uh Barnon, Evansville, Midwest and Enderton by statute. First class cities have to opt in.
So if I had an issue with that, I should take that up to the legislative side. That would be a good. But I think I just said this, they could voluntarily.
Yeah, they wouldn't be.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, and I think that's what the the distinction is, is that maybe having, maybe this is what I was saying, is having a conversation, you know, maybe the next county commission, a mayor's meeting, we just have a, you know, conversation, frank conversation around what that would look like, not have any any um, you know, preconceived notion that they would, but I think it's a good conversation to have. Um gender review, do you have anything for?
The only thing I would bring up is just a heads up that uh tonight you're going through uh a rather unique situation wherein we are closing out uh an L E D and then opening up a second L E D, which uh like I said, is not typical for how we have the opportunity to do these, but um can be a little confusing when we're indeed talking about two L Ds kind of LEDs, excuse me, kind of uh commingling themselves, all the same neighborhood, just different phases. And so you may have neighbors coming to communicate about either one, and it may be important to clarify which ones are talking about when they do come up. That's really.
Pardon, do we give a thumbs up with Health Department?
I I felt like I got.
We got enough. Okay, good. Okay, I just didn't ask for a thumbs up, but we're good with it. You guys know that. Perfect. Okay, anybody else have any questions about a gender review?
Question on Mary Ann Criner or Casper construction. So at some point, can we talk about that so that those of us in Port One could, you know, try to communicate with the neighborhood?
Ready for that next week, if that's okay with the council. All right.